Good morning, everyone. We warmly welcome you all for the special session for auditors on international standards on quality management. The International Auditing and Assurance Standards Board, IAASB, has issued three new quality management standards, which will come into effect on fifteen December twenty twenty two. The standards, namely international standards on quality management, that is ISQM, which encompasses ISQM one and ISQM two, and the international standard on auditing ISA two hundred and twenty revised, aim to achieve a more robust system of quality management performed using the auditing standards and mark and evaluation from a traditional, more linear approach to quality control. The new standard will also result in a robust, scalable and proactive approach to audit quality management, which is central to ensuring trust and sustainability in the audit profession. Recognizing that considerable time and effort we will need to be deployed into understanding, analyzing, designing and implementing a system of quality management that is in compliance with the quality management standard that comes into force. Sri Lanka has decided to arrange a special session on educating auditors on these new quality management standards. These standards will be mandatory based on their interconnection to the Sri Lanka auditing standards that are guaranteed. Our main speaker of the session today is Mrs. Sanat Fernando, partner Ernst and Young, alternate chairman of this Sri Lanka Auditing Standards Committee. So we have a fruitful panel discussion also line up towards the end of the session. The moderator for this panel discussion will be Mr. Suren Rajakarya, head of audit KPMG, chairman of Sri Lanka Auditing Standards Committee. Panelist will be Mrs. Sanjay Bandar, president of the Institute of Chartered Accountants, Mr. Manil Jay Singh, managing partner Ernst and Young, and Ms. Nishani Fernando, Ms. Nishani Ferreira, partner Moir, Director Moir Consulting Private Limited. So now I will move on to the introduction of the presenter. Mr. Fernando is a fellow member of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of Sri Lanka and a partner at Ernst and Young Sri Lanka with over thirty years of audit and advisory experience in multiple industries. He is also the alternate chairman of the Auditing Standards Committee of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of Sri Lanka. So to start the proceeding, I will give some common announcement which we usually give. We will share you a CPD form link after the session. So we request all of you to stay until the end. So without staying until the end of the session, we will not be able to send you the form. So we kindly request you all to stay until the end of the session. So with that brief, I will hand over the session to the presenter, Mr. Fernando now. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, CS Sri Lanka, for giving the opportunity to discuss this very, very important topic. Well, I must at the outset tell you that, you know, some of you may have attempted to read this, these three standards, ISQM one, two, and then a little bit of changes to the other standards. Oh, well, I'm sure you'd have figured out it's hundreds and hundreds of pages and it's not going to be that easy. And we also have many toolkits that are available in the public website of IFAC. That is also a few hundred pages, a little more than a hundred pages. So that's the width and the breadth of what you're going to listen to. But I would not be able to cover all the areas, but instead of that, you know, in line with the objective of this session, that is just to give you an awareness on this topic, which is going to be applicable when it's adopted by the auditing standards board, auditing standards, statutory auditing standards committee. It'll be applicable, which hasn't taken place yet. So let's go into discuss a few aspects, salient features of the standard. Right, so I'm now on content page. If you don't see that, please let me know so that I can do something if you don't see it. Right, so I'll take you about a little more than hour in trying to give you a brief overview of the standard. And also, I will go into a little details of some of the salient features of international standards on quality management. Namely, I might go into the audit quality aspects and the assessment process, the risk assessment process, which the standard deals with. Excuse me, and also a new area which has been further and further strengthened, the monitoring and the remediation aspect of it. And lastly, we have a panel discussion and a question session. So if you have any questions as I present, please feel free to put it down in the Q and A tab and later on I could be able to have a look at them. So that's what I would like to first get into. So, right, so Ishwar, it's your time. Are you able to run the poll first, first poll? All right, so what we could do is in the absence of some help from the technology. Yes, now I think you can see this. So what I want you to do is to answer this question. You will, you know, I'll give you about a few seconds, thirty, forty seconds. The question is, what is the status of the quality management, international standards of quality management adoption in your practice, your own practice? You may be coming from a sole practitioner status. It could be, you know, a smaller strategic firm or you could be a part of the large firms. So let us know what is the status of the adoption, which choice? Odi, attempt the first one. All right, so I think we've got at least halfway mark of the number of participants. So I'd like to end the poll, you know, here. So what I could see as your response is that a significant majority, you're saying we are little prepared and hope to get ready by the effective date. So that's good. Being in hope in these times of difficulty is something which you must do. So we got the, excuse me, we got the message that you're little prepared and some of you haven't made any preparation. That's very good. And what I did not want as a response was the last one. That is to say, I don't think ISQM will apply to my firm, however small you are, depending on that type of business that you're in, professional services that you're in. This will be applicable, but of course, at a very, you know, scaled down level. So it's good. We have a good response. Ishwar, you could, Ishwar, you could close the poll now. All right. So. All right. Yeah, so let's now go into a little bit of detail. So if you look at as to when exactly, we may be discussing the standard right now. But of course, if you are a person who had seen this, that's good. So in fact, somewhere in December twenty twenty, when we were grappling with the pandemic, that's the time the IASB released these three, what I call the family or the suite of standards. So that's, it's a package of three standards, ISQM one, two, and also the consequences changes to ISA two twenty. So the first standard is on the quality management for firms that performs audits or reviews or financial statements or any other assurance services or related service engagement. So you could see from the label of the standard, this is for the auditors. You may be doing audit reviews or reviews or any other related services. So this is for you and also based on the structure of the firm, your other units also could get affected because of this. ISQM two is on engagement quality reviews. I will brief you on that in a little while as I get into that stage. So that's about carrying out quality reviews at firm level. You do review your audit files, but that's not what we are talking about at EQR or the engagement quality reviews level. That's about either internally or by through, you know, some other arrangement. You need to, this new quality management expects you to get, you know, you know, go through a quality review as well. Two twenty aspect is basically, two twenty is a exact auditing standard. So that's about the revisions that are going to come in due to the revisions of the quality management domain. So you would see there are some which we are going to discuss. So the quality management for an audit of financial statements is what two twenty is. So if you take ISQM one and two, they are not really auditing standards per se. The auditing standard is only two twenty. The other two are, you know, overarching requirements on the profession of the auditor. If you're in the professional services of an auditor, these two would apply and they're not auditing standard, but they are overarching requirements, you know, at this point in time, I must say that. So the effective date of these has been, you know, also put down as December twenty two. December twenty two, which is just a few months away. But in Sri Lanka, the position is we are yet to adopt this and there'll be discussions around that at the panel discussion also. So at the outset, I must tell you that there is so much in this, there are loads of matters in these three standards, mainly in ISQM one. So through these standards, ISB is attempting to address the evolving and increasingly complex audit ecosystem, where you would see the auditor's job has become very complex. And also there is more and more, you know, public scrutiny and you see many news items around the auditors in any country. So because the ecosystem of audits have become and are in the process of becoming increasingly complex, so they are trying to address that issue. And also there are growing stakeholder expectations around our profession. So. Excuse me. So there is a need for quality management because of that and it needs to be proactive and adaptable. So if I just quote the IFAC, the IFAC says the standards direct the audit firms to embed quality into their corporate culture and tone at the top. That comes as the main message. So you're in the business of public interest and the main product you as the auditor is providing audits. So the receiver of your professional services demand quality, audit quality in your, in your service. So if you do not have audit quality embedded in your corporate culture and tone at the top, you're basically not, you know, producing or manufacturing the good that is intended to serve. A bit fun to serve that, you know, the public. So embedding quality into the corporate culture and enhancing the tone at the top comes as the main theme around these three, these three standards. And also it asks, direct, IFAC directs the audit firms to improve robustness of improve the robustness of the monitoring and remediation if you have any issues around audit quality. You know, monitoring how you're, how you deliver audit quality and then if you have any issue remediation of it and there is improved robustness that's being brought in. And also when it comes to engagement quality review, again, that is also aimed at improving the robustness. So that's basically the theme as to the suite of standard, which are important. Now, I'd like to also introduce a little bit of the background into this. If you look at the current quality control standard that we are complex with, you've been, we've been complying with the ISQC one, which is SQQC one. All this while, I think it came somewhere into effect in somewhere in two thousand thirteen. Uh, all this while, I think it came somewhere, uh, into effect in somewhere in two thousand thirteen. And so what you have at the moment is ISQC one, international standards on quality control. Now this brings in international standard on quality management. So so what's the difference? So, um, it's a- as the title refers to, you're you're moving from a system of quality management. Uh, you you're moving into a system of quality management from a system of quality control. Right? So now at this point, you may be wondering, okay, what is the difference between quality control and quality management? The answer essentially, uh, is that, um, here as I double A S B explains, the quality management approach is a risk-based approach. Rather than simply setting quality control procedures. Uh, so so if you look at the SLSQC one, where the quality control, uh, was the focus, it gives you procedures that a firm must follow. It doesn't look at mostly what are the circumstances under which you're carrying out your, uh, firm's duties. So by bringing in a quality management, what it tries to do is it tries to bring in a risk-based approach, what's applicable to your circumstances rather than giving a checklist of quality control procedures that you must follow. So so that's, uh, the the difference between, uh, these two. So so quality control is compliance oriented. Uh, meaning, uh, when requirements are laid down, it becomes a checklist. While, um, uh, quality management is risk-based. When the system of quality mani- uh, quality management is risk-based, it can be tailored. Uh, in other words, to, uh, actual risks that your firm takes and exposed to. If you're, uh, a sole practitioner, if you're a a fewer partner, uh, arrangement. So so the type of work that you do may be different to what a bigger firm must be doing. So what is applicable in a quality control procedure may be easy for a bigger firm to comply with, but may not be so uh, to a, uh, a smaller firm. So so this tries to bring in that risk-based approach. Uh, I would say it's it's a good attempt, uh, because it's it it kind of gives you the ability to scale it under your circumstances, but only thing is, uh, this is very conceptual. Um, so which means we need some help, uh, from the institute, uh, to to put that into practice. I'd like to at this point explain why do we as a professional getting this much of standards? Why do we have to have quality management as a standard? Uh, we we'll try to, you know, understand it in this way. Let's say that you know, like all of you, uh, you know, audit, uh, simple organizations like, uh, retail or or wholesale businesses. So you know the business of that, pretty simple. Now, carrying out an audit, uh, requires some, uh, level of knowledge about the industry that you are, uh, the company of the industry that you're auditing. So 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 not having adequate experience, uh, in understanding those business risks would not make you a good auditor. Now, now as opposed to if you look at, uh, sorry, if you look at, uh, a business like, let's say, uh, pharmaceutical industry. You can imagine, uh, the research and development, uh, activities which needs to get quality controlled. Uh, and also the product that has to go through very stringent quality control because it's a type of a product uh, which is consumed by humans. And then and that demands that type of quality. So so in a retail organization, you might not have that demand from the people who consumes it. There will be, but it's not as stringent as in a pharmaceutical manufacturing company. Now, what have we providing as our goods or service? We are, uh, you know, doing an audit. An audit, whether you like it or not, has become what I call a public good. Uh, there is public interest around the the work that we do. So which means there is a demand of that high level of audit quality of the work that we do. Because, uh, what we do affect uh, the judgment and the economic decisions of, uh, the people who are who are relying on our work. So now that's why there is this much of, uh, quality management or quality control is demanded from our work. Uh, so 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 try to understand it in that that context because, you know, some of and some of us may be, uh, you know, getting disheartened by the level of, uh, regulations, level of monitoring that that we had faced uh, in terms of authorities. Uh, you know, that is because we are in in a profession where there is quality being demanded, audit quality being demanded because what we do is is a public interest, uh, type of a work, right? So so keep that in mind as to why, um, this much of, uh, you know, provisions are coming into our provision. Uh, at this, uh, at this point in time, I want to, uh, just to give you a flavor of, uh, what are these changes? Now, we, some of you might already know about, uh, some aspects of SLSQC one, the Sri Lanka Standards on Quality Control, one which we have already adopted. And what are the differences between that and these two new standard or the suite of three standards, uh, Q Q M one, Q M two? Um, so so if you look at, um, a basic comparison. Uh, you can see, uh, these are broad topics, many of the broad topics in ISQC one, uh, also in the ISQM one. Uh, but these topics are extremely broad, broad. Uh, it it talks about leadership, uh, ethical requirements, acceptance, uh, you know, so on and so forth. And even, uh, the new standard which I'm going to discuss, uh, it has kind of enhanced somewhat the same topics with addition of, uh, two new areas, uh, which is the risk assessment process and also information and communication process, which we will deal with in a little while. ISQM two is about engagement culture review. So, um, now, you might also want to understand why is a quality management, a standard on quality management takes this type of broader perspective. And if you, uh, if you contrast, uh, the way you, uh, when when you may do it, carrying out an audit, uh, we do, uh, uh, understand the internal controls in an environment, uh, internal control environment in in the audits that we do. Um, so w- why do we do that? Uh, we we want to understand, uh, the possibility of having material statements. Um, and and to do that, how do we do it? Uh, we start with, uh, the entity level controls such as board of directors, uh, their their awareness, the attitude towards controls and, uh, awareness about the controls. We try to understand, uh, from a, uh, i- i- in a perspective, uh, uh, the governance aspects of the organizations that we audit and and their compliance with ethics, their HR policies and procedures. Uh, the board level committees, there are oversights that we have. So so when we try to do an audit of an organization, we try to understand it from that approach, right? Now. Now, if that is the approach businesses are taking, uh, to be governed, uh, to to meet their, uh, meet with their objectives, why not taking the same approach to set up a system of, uh, audit quality in the firms of, uh, audit auditors? So so that that had been the approach which I if IFAC has taken, I double A S P has taken. As we go to understand the organizations, uh, internal controls, they have taken the same kind of, uh, framework to, uh, you know, um, create, uh, the standard ISQM one, it has a similar approach. Uh, the reason being our objective of our firms of auditors i- is that, uh, we are, uh, we have to have quality audits being done. So now, if if you had to do quality audits, if if somebody is going to audit us, somebody is trying to audit us to understand whether we are doing a quality audit, they will also want to understand, okay, what do we have as the governance and leadership aspects? How do we assess our risks? How do we, what type of ethical, uh, principles do we have heavy embedded in our business? So so that's same approach that we do, uh, we we take when you are doing an audit of all the companies. And it's and it's the same when we are being audited also. Uh, so 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 you can clearly see that, uh, the approach, uh, uh, is basically looking at the practice level. Uh, that is, if you look at ISQM one and ISQM two, all these requirements is at practice level. And, uh, if you look at, um, then the the next standard ISA two hundred, uh, that is going into engagement level requirements in terms of quality control, right? So 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 these basically as to, uh, the reason and the rationale around why, uh, these, you know, broad concepts have been, uh, brought in, uh, to, uh, you know, to 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 write these standard. So so there are about eight, uh, key areas in the standard. Governance and leadership, the risk assessment process, the resources, uh, uh, the expectations around resources, uh, when it comes to, um, quality management, monitoring and remediation, information and communication, relevant ethical requirements, acceptance and, uh, continuance, that's where, you know, when you, uh, you know, accept a client, continue a client, what what uh, should you be looking at, uh, and also performance level, um, activities, right? So 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 let's move into, uh, go into a few areas of this. Now, as I mentioned to you, uh, the whole objective of ISQM is to address the management of quality. Let's say management of audit quality by an an audit firm and the management of quality on a specific firm's engagement. So so at the firm level as well as the engagement level, both will be, uh, the objectives. And then as I mentioned to you, whether we like it or not, uh, the services of an auditor is is like any other public good. You know, uh, I I mentioned to you, uh, the analogy between a pharmaceutical manufacturing company, uh, and you know, where, you know, we as the consumers are worried about the quality of it. And if we are the users of financial statements and one of the main, uh, products that we consume, uh, when it comes to, uh, financial statement is audit report. So so audit report has to have that quality, uh, like in the case of, uh, pharmaceutical manufacturing company. So that's why all of these, uh, have, uh, things have come in. So so it addresses the public interest expectation, expectation first of all. And 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 also, uh, rec, uh, it it actually looks at, uh, the it the standard requires commitment to quality to be embedded, uh, I should say, in the fabric of a firm's cu- culture. Uh, you could have various decisions being taken in strategic, uh, decisions, operational decisions. The the leadership actions and the behaviors and the message to give to the entirety of your firm that our main objective of our business is audit quality. I would not say nothing else, but this would be paramount important. We as, uh, you know, professionals in business, there are many, many things that we have to balance to carry out a business. But the approach, uh, that ISQM, uh, quality management takes it takes is that amongst all of these, you have to put, um, uh, the the governance, leadership and accountability at the towards audit quality as, uh, at at the topmost, uh, level. Uh, that is because of, uh, the the public interest, uh, interest that that we are, right? So let's go into some details, um, um, about, uh, ISQM one. Um, so so as I mentioned to you, there are eight areas. Uh, I'll take a few areas in detail. Uh, so so let me first get into um, the item number two, uh, you know, I I named it as two because in the sketch, uh, it's second one. It's easy to understand the second one first than the risk assessment. All right. So so it's about governance, uh, leadership and the overall responsibility for the, uh, quality management system. This new standard, uh, more robustly addresses uh, the roles and responsibilities of leadership. Uh, and and it specifies who's ultimately responsible for the system. So so I'm talking about the quality management system in an audit firm. So this explains that the leadership, uh, would be finally, uh, in charge for this. So so that's where the buck will stop. So so, uh, so this is where, uh, you you might want to, uh, you know, we have never had, uh, an auditing standard, uh, that tells us, uh, you know, it it tells you the audit quality is important everywhere, but it doesn't go into the governance aspects of the firm, uh, to in in this detail as, uh, the ISQM does. So it it also specifies a few, uh, other key roles, uh, in in the quality management system that that needs to be assigned to appropriate levels. And also the standard clarifies, uh, who is appropriately qualified for those roles. Uh, including, uh, requiring that they have the appropriate influence and authority within the firm. Uh, and and reinforces that those key roles are assigned to the right people in the firm. And and the standard also ensures that the in, uh, the individuals have an open channel communicate of communication with those with ultimate responsibility for the system. Now that's how the governance is now laid down. Uh, it having said that the leadership is in charge, uh, who's in charge, uh, would be ultimately responsible. It tells you there are certain other roles that needs to be played, uh, quality management partner uh, and various other roles that one, uh, that the firm has to have. It doesn't, it doesn't talk about bodies of people, it doesn't say leadership is one and another person has to be, uh, at the quality management role. These are, uh, it's not the bodies of people that they're talking about, it's about the roles that being played. It could be one person, uh, playing the same role or or multiple roles. It they, it doesn't have a a prohibition around that. Um, a- and also it addresses, uh, the standard addresses the actions and behaviors of leadership. Um, and it it tries to ensure that the leadership demonstrate a commitment to quality. There are new requirements, uh, that also hold, uh, leadership, uh, as, uh, being the finally accountable authority. And then there are a couple of provisions, uh, within the standard, uh, that has, uh, explicit requirements for periodic evaluations of leadership. And the requirement, uh, that the individuals with ultimate responsibility And the requirement that the individuals with ultimate responsibility, let's have example, this the C E O role or the managing partners role, there has to be an evaluation of that role and and that is demanded from from the standard. And also, you know, it it needs to be, to to some extent, is established so so that the entire, the firm is, you know, banking on that process of quality management rather than it being spread and 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 saying that, you know, like when there is an audit failure. At at the moment, I think we all, you know, take some view that, okay, there is X company that has failed and the X Y firm has, you know, has been the auditor. And then Mister Z is, has been the partner and, you know, so, so you would see, you know, the firms trying to, you know, divorce the relationship the firm has with that partner and then go on, you know, doing the usual activities while that being, you know, a method of managing it. With this Q I S Q M one, it doesn't stop only at the engagement partner level. It brings in the leadership also to that strong stance of culture of accountability. I want to also let you, tell you that, you know, the standard explicitly requires that the firm demonstrates a commitment to quality through its culture. And that, and that same commitment to audit quality has to get cascaded throughout the firm if you are to serve the public interest. And, and that's a key aspect and it's a key reminder for the firm's leadership to, so which means you need to have, you need to have that understanding that audit quality being the of the most important item or the objective of an audit firm. You have the responsibility as well as you have the accountability also laid down across, you know, it can, it's mostly top to bottom, top down type on a type of an approach that this tries to bring in. You, you need to also, it, the, the standard also tells you that you need to integrate your operational and various process decisions. You know, linked with the quality in mind rather than any other aspects. You know, you are in, you are professionals in business, but your good is a public good. If you don't have audit quality, that good is of of no use. So better be having your quality as the paramount importance while you're carrying out your business. That, that's basically the message that the governance, leadership and overall responsibility component of the I S Q M one tries to bring in. Now, this is very broad. In, in a single sentence, if I tell you, you know, it it tries to reinforce the leadership's commitment and the response, ultimate responsibility and accountability to audit quality. And that's all what it tries to do. Now, put this in practice and 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 showing the public, you know, the public has to have some communication from, from, so, so when I get to that information and communication piece, I will explain. There is a need for public to know, how are you managing the audit quality? Audit quality management system. You, you need to, so that's why you might see the big fours before and all other firms in various parts of the world, they, every year, they they put out a publication on how they are managing the quality aspect as, as a public, you know, informant for public information. So, so, so public needs to know if this is a requirement, how, how you are managing that. So that is very important to be kept in mind. So, now with that, the real tone at the top. So let's try to go into the next important aspect that is the, the firm's risk assessment process. So, as I mentioned to you, the, the risk-based approach in, in, in to quality management is good because it allows you and it, it gives you the opportunity to, you know, focus and tailor and scale the requirements to your circumstances rather than having a checklist type of an approach. For example, if a firm carries out large and complex listed group audits, the type and level of audit quality expected management, type and level of audit quality management is, it can be robust, it can be, you know, comprehensive. And, and if the firm is only auditing and non-complex businesses, let's have example, retail and wholesale type of S P Es, it allows you to scale it so that you might not have all the bills and visuals of this, you know, the, the main, you know, the procedures. But you will have some simple procedures being adopted to meet with your requirements. So so, so the risk-based approach is incorporating, is incorporated in I S Q M one through a number of new requirements. So, so they are, they are labeled as the, the, the label for this is the firm's risk assessment process, right? So, so now we have the leadership and the governance. How does the firm assess the risk of the firm, right? So, so, so this process, you know, brings in three essential pieces. It establishes that, it tries to establish what they call the quality objectives, audit quality objectives. So, so first one is basically establishing quality objective. Meaning what does the firm need to achieve in order to consistently manage the audit quality of the engagements? Identifying and assessing the audit quality risks. Now, we have an objective for audit quality. What could go wrong in achieving those audit quality objectives? That's the second piece of it. And thirdly, you know what can go wrong in that quality objectives? If that is the case, you need to thirdly design and implement the responses to those what could go wrong. That is, you have to have controls put in place to address the quality risks. So you have the quality objective, audit quality. And, and you need to go through a process of understanding what can go wrong in this. You might have, I'll give you an example, let's say that you are doing a particular audit, which requires a little bit industry knowledge. And, and because you don't understand the business that well, maybe you have an audit failure. Maybe that certain accounting is wrong because you did not understand the, the type of business that they are in. So, so what does that mean? You need to identify that what could go wrong. You will be signing off an inappropriate audit opinion because you did not adequately understand the business aspects. And that, you know, helps to make sure that the accounting is right. So, so that what could go wrong would be identified. And then, how do you make sure that it doesn't happen? Perhaps you would have a process where in certain industries, you would have some level of experience, people being brought in to do that audit. Or you would have a few of them who are supposed, who are required to look at certain areas of those audits always. Now that's the risk and the response to the risk. So, so you had to put that in place, that system, the risk assessment process needs to be put in place so that, so that you're complying with the requirements. Now, these, the quality objectives of a firm for audit quality to achieve audit quality, they are basically prescribed in the standard. You don't have to think magically as to what to be my quality objectives, they are all prescribed in the standard itself. So, so, so then you have to understand what can go wrong towards that quality objective, right? So, so this approach of starting from quality objectives will help you as a firm in, in, in properly identifying and assessing the quality risks. Because the quality objectives focus the firm more specifically on what needs to be achieved. And what could go wrong in achieving the quality objectives and setting up response process is where you are supposed to design and implement to prevent detect those quality, you know, facing those risks. Now, I'm sure when I, when I explain this piece, you know, a ring would have, a, a bell would have rung in your mind. You know, does this approach ring a bell in your mind? Don't you think that this is the same method that we use to evaluate internal controls of an organization? And, and, and when we do the risk assessment, when we are doing the audit, we understand the business objectives, we understand the risks in the business and, and try to see what are the processes that they have put in, the controls that they have put in to, to prevent those from happening. And, and is it designed appropriately, is it happening appropriately in the business? That's the approach that we take to understand the, the internal controls of the organizations that we audit. So, so, so it looks like that the I S Q M is, is something very similar to the risk assessment process that we do on companies. This is the risk assessment pro- process of our own firms. Right? So, so, so it looks like that I S Q M is what is written by the auditors to audit the auditors' internal controls. What is written by the auditors to audit the auditors' internal controls. So this is why many refer to I S Q M process as the internal control audit of the auditors. And, and I've heard Mrs. Surenraja Gadiya saying that I S Q M is the salve and noxalies for the auditors. You know what it means, that, that the rigor through which you have to go and prove that your internal quality management system, you know, is this much appropriate? Because when we have our internal processes, we can provide a, a product which is our audit opinion of that audit, expected audit quality. And that's why, that's how the public can rely on. So that's the link as to how these concepts have been brought in to this standard, right? So, so keep that in mind as the background, right? So, so the risk assessment process has to be established. And, and this risk assessment process, this piece, I, you know, like as, as a firm, we have gone through this, because as part of being a network firm, we have to go through it and comply by this December. And the time that we spent and the, the stress that we had to face in trying to get this sorted out, this piece was tremendous. That is because you need to, you know, make sure that all your systems and processes are documented first of all, risks are identified, controls have been designed and, and we need to, you know, check whether they are designed appropriately. And then we had to put a process in place to check those controls. So which means we are also becoming like the, the companies that we, we audit. And, and then that process of risk assessment has to be established. There is a lot of time that may be required if you're, you know, doing complex work such as large corporates audits of complex nature. You might have to spend a lot of time, but that doesn't mean that if you are a smaller firm, you might not have to spend that much of time, there is enough and more, you know, risk-based scaling that you could do in, in trying to achieve this piece, right? So, so we, we discussed the leadership and the governance aspect, we discussed the risk assessment aspect of I S Q M one and, and then comes the third area, the resources. So, it, it, the, the resources element. If you look at the I S Q C one, Sri Lanka standards on quality control, which we are complying at the moment. It only addresses the human resources, it doesn't address any other resource. So now, I S Q M one has been expanded to bring the technological resources. For example, the audit tools, you know, the applications used by the firm for your independence monitoring, if you have any. You might have certain intellectual resources, for example, the firm's methodology, your guidances, your templates, tools, et cetera. So, so all that is ha- have been brought in now. And also it covers to an enhanced aspect the human resources. It, it, it includes the people outside, it, it includes the people inside the firm as well as the people who can be outside the firm. If they are engaged in roles such as engagement contributor. Now, what does that mean? You know, like if you're a smaller organization, smaller firm, you might not have the engagement quality reviewer role being played by an internal party. You know, himself or herself. That is because if you're a one, one professional, sole professional service firm or a few, you know, partner firm, sometimes, you know, like this E Q R's role, the engagement contributor roles is an auditor on the auditor type of role. You can't audit and, you know, the auditor can't audit the own work. So, so coming from that perspective, you know, this allows you to have an external party. Maybe a group of people, also professionals who provide the service of audit quality review. Now, so in, in that case, they can be external papers, people. So, so they, there are aspects of resources also discussed in the standard. And, 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 and they also talk about what resources are needed, how they are used and how they are maintained and whether they are appropriate, those aspects are also dealt with, right? So, the next area is extremely important. And, and this is basically is where the next, you know, kind of effort the requirement to spend a lot of time would be in this area. That is, you will have a quality management system. Establishing a Q M S quality management system is alone is not sufficient. There should be monitoring of the quality management system. And when you monitor, you will have findings. How do you remediate the findings? And that system is also talked about in ample, to ample extent in this standard. So, so, so it, it, the, the I S Q M one has shifted the focus from engagement level monitoring to monitoring the entire system of quality management. engagement level monitoring to monitoring the entire system of quality management. Uh, and, and that's one subtle difference uh, within the, in the newer standard. So it's more proactive and more effective. Uh, it's not only, uh, you know, establishing a checklist of things to have. It is telling you, uh, here is the system and this is how it works. And does it work? Yes, it's working and this is the checks that we have done. So that's about the monitoring. And did you find any issue? Yes, this is how we found it. And this is how we looped in that finding to make sure that we are not, you know, repeating that issue again. This is how it's looped in for, as a correction loop, right? So, um, uh, so, so also uh, ISQM one emphasizes uh, that uh, tailoring the nature, timing and extent of the monitoring activities. And, and it can be done uh, due to nu- a, a number of factors. So, uh, because, you know, this tries, this allows you to scale it to the level of the firm that you're in. Uh, so, so at the firm, for example, uh, you know, how the underlying system is designed, the nature and the circumstances of the firm and the engagements it performs would be a kind of uh, you know, uh, factor that determines the level of monitoring. Uh, so, so if you are an auditor of a few SBEs, um, very simple type of SBEs, uh, the monitoring need not be as stringent and not really stringent as, as comprehensive as uh, a firm uh, that may be doing a complex group audits, right? So, so that's what it tries to say. Uh, so, a- and also in determining whether remedial action are needed. Uh, so, and also how do you investigate uh, those findings? And, and going into details uh, as to what the standard calls the root cause of those deficiencies are all laid down. Uh, root cause is the concept, uh, some of you may be already aware of it. It just tries to understand why did this happen? Tries to go to the ultimate end of the cause, right? So let's say, for example, you have an audit failure. Why? Um, maybe the document uh, that the auditor was not independent. Why um, they have uh, done an activity, uh, helped the firm, uh, helped the company that they audited uh, with some management activities. Now, why was this done? There is another reason. And why wasn't that known to be not compatible with ethics or the independence? Uh, why didn't the firm leadership know that? Now, these are, you know, trying to, that's, that's, I, I just demonstrated a, a method of finding root causes. You ask, keep on asking, you are keep on asking uh, the, the word, why, the question, why as to it occurred? So, so the root cause analysis is something which you are supposed to do. When you, this uh, standard addresses, now when you go to find the root cause, it's easy to uh, prevent this from recurring. But if you don't go to the root cause and if you only try to, you know, manage this on the surface, it tries to say that it will get repeated again, right? So, so making sure that the root cause is identified, is, of the deficiencies are identified is something which is required by the standard. So, so that's something which you need to keep in mind, the remedial actions, uh, what you are doing uh, and, and bringing that into the loop of corrections and communicating uh, to the leadership. Uh, the leadership telling the engagement team and everyone else, okay, this is our finding and this is uh, this is the consequence for the team who caused this, let's say deficiency. And then uh, you know, this is the message for anyone existing in the firm to make sure that it would not be repeated. Uh, is also, um, you know, addressed in the standard, how you do that. He's also in, uh, addressing the standard. So, so, so you, I think you're kind of, you might be getting kind of uh, understanding as to this is not just a checklist again, this is an overall quality management system, right? So, so keep that in mind. Uh, so root cause analysis is something it very, very important uh, in doing, right? So, all right. Um, the next area which I want to introduce you, uh, as I mentioned to you, I'm not going through all the areas, but I've gone through leadership, uh, I've gone through risk assessment, I've gone through uh, the other area uh, and, and the important areas which I taught. And this is the last new area, uh, information and communication. Uh, the other component in the ISQM uh, quality management system. So, information and communication, uh, uh, it, it's not there in the ISQC one, the, the current standard, it's not there. And it's a newly introduced area because we are talking about quality management rather than quality control. So, so the continual flow of information and, and communication is an essential element uh, at, in, in any system. And, and, and that's why this component is important. And, and, and communicating the audit quality drivers of your firm. Um, it, what it requires is the top leadership uh, to give that message uh, to everyone in the firm, embedded in every aspect of strategic as well as operational decisions. Uh, the audit quality being the paramount matter uh, to focus on. And, and, and establishing a, a, a method of communicating. This is how we maintain uh, a quality management system. Internal communication as well as external communication is explained uh, in this piece. Uh, there may be certain uh, you know, uh, events where you might want to tell internally, okay, we have found this deficiency and this is what we have put in place uh, to make sure that it's not recurring. Uh, or you might want to say, uh, in, in a certain case, uh, you might want to do an external communication as to something that has surfaced and, and, and your perspective of it. And, and, and I know uh, in most of the time, uh, that is something which is rather avoided uh, by all the firms, uh, but there are certain aspects where uh, the, the expectation of quality. They're not looking at going out to the public and then say when there is a personal, uh, you know, bad media coverage about something happening about a firm. Uh, this is not asking you to go and put a presser to the press notice as to your perspective. All it tries to say, asks you to do is uh, as, as a proactive measure, tell the public uh, about your quality management system. What do you do? And as a process, what you have done in a given year? That's uh, the aspect of communication that uh, this expects you to do. So you, you would see uh, in, uh, you know, uh, in the big fours, uh, all the firms publish their message around audit quality every year. So you can download some of those uh, in any firm and you would see uh, what is expected and what they uh, say uh, in, into the public to me. Right? So that's the fifth item. And so, so I, I just covered very briefly uh, the, the main areas of ISQM one, uh, which is a quality management system. It has certain components. We looked at the leadership as very important aspect, the, the message to audit quality we discussed. And then we also discussed about uh, you know, our own firm will have to have our own risk assessment, identifying our quality objectives as prescribed by the standard and then figuring out what could go wrongs. And then we let it figure out uh, the, the responses to that and have a system of that being checked and findings being remediated. Uh, so that aspect we discussed. And then we also discussed about the communications internally and externally. Uh, you know, that's basically like uh, uh, one of the main messages that I wanted to tell you as arising as, as the from, from the quality management system. So as I mentioned to you, this is the suite of standard, uh, package of standards. So QM one is what I mentioned to you now. QM two is about, ISQM two is about engagement quality reviews, right? So, uh, engagement quality reviews is basically uh, trying to look at um, a process of um, uh, uh, you know, bringing in whether an engagement quality review is required or not. If it's required, now I, I'm not talking about the audit files that are being reviewed as an engagement file. Now that is discussed in uh, the ISA two twenty, which is the the review of the engagement partner of an audit file. This is a firm level review where you are looking at. You need to also uh, you know, put in place apart from that file reviews based on a risk-based, maybe some of the key engagements, risky engagements, certain difficult industry engagements, those audit files uh, at least in totality or certain areas only would have to undergo uh, a quality uh, review uh, at the firm level, not by the engagement partner, but at the firm level. So you are looking at a system where apart from the audit file review, there is another uh, kind of a independent person, independent of the engagement team, uh, looking at the key areas of that audit, whether your quality objectives have been uh, reached and, and setting that up, um, appointment, appointing uh, uh, the right person as the engagement quality reviewer. Um, uh, and, and, and performing uh, uh, engagement quality reviews. Uh, it could be certain areas only, it could be as the audit is happening like a hot review or it could be a post review, review uh, uh, after it's done. All that, all those aspects uh, are dealt, dealt within the quality management standard too. And, and how you document the quality management uh, done here. Now, this, now, now, some of us already are aware of this concept of independent partner review. Now, independent partner review is ISA two twenty aspect, that is, the audit file is reviewed by the engagement partner plus an independent partner depending on that organization, that, that firm, uh, right? So now that is for the purpose of the engagement. Now, ISQM two is for the purpose of the entire firm. Now, this is where you might uh, look at um, like a thematic type of a review of what are the risk areas? And on that theme, uh, there'll be another team that is looking at um, uh, the whole total, uh, you know, files or selected files of, of the firm. So, so this is not, this is not kind of level three, but I mean, my level three is not the engagement level uh, one. This is reviews, this is the firm level review, which where it's, it's, it's a quality side is again reviewed uh, based on an established method uh, by the firm itself, right? So, so ISQM one and QM two are all at firm level. And ISA two twenty is the quality management of the audit of the financial level, that is at the engagement level. So what you are supposed to do as quality aspects, when you are doing an audit is what is discussed in the ISA two twenty. Uh, what is discussed in ISQM one and two are the things which you had to do as far as quality is concerned at the firm level, right? So, so let's go into uh, a little bit the details uh, as to uh, the ISA two twenty revised one. So, so it, it tells you about the engagement partners, overall responsibility and, and sufficiency and appropriateness uh, as to how those concepts are, uh, you know, put into place. And also it talks about a, 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 a very important aspect, uh, the, the culture and the expected behavior of the team uh, as well as bringing in the professional skepticism. You know, you have the partner and perhaps the experienced members of the audit team as to how you push professional skepticism to the audit, not un, you know, like some of us, uh, you know, maybe somebody like me who has uh, uh, learned auditing maybe three decades ago, we, you know, we, we started with audit programs. So it's just a checklist of things to do. It wasn't risk-based at all. So, so you only tend to carry out those activities, not tailoring uh, the activities, audit procedures in responsive to the risks which you identify. So, so, so you will have situations where you will be just, uh, you know, doing those activities now. Uh, but there is no professional skepticism in focus i- i- in the previous, uh, you know, uh, standards. Now it's basically you have the professional skepticism. You know, you, you are, you may be uh, at the, at the, at the top of uh, the team where you have the most amount of experience. You look at it from, from the kind of a stand back type of an approach. Okay, does this transaction uh, make sense? Why did they sell this product at this level? You know, if, how come they achieved that target whereas everyone else did not meet the, you, you know, as far as the competitive data concern? That's professional skepticism. So ISA two twenty actually brings those aspects as far as the audit file is concerned, audit engagement is concerned. Uh, so, so those are what is included in ISA two twenty, right? So, so actually this is basically the end of what I wanted to discuss uh, with you. So, I'll be happy to um, uh, get into uh, a, another quick poll. Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, uh, and put the second poll, which is, I'm basically asking you the question now that you listen to uh, me. Uh, what's the assistance that you as an SBE auditor require from the, from this, from CSL uh, towards adopting ISQM one? So, are you looking at training? Are you looking at guidelines and toolkits? Um, are you saying that, no, nothing much because it might not affect type of work that I do and are you not sure or is it other? If you think it's others, you may be able to, you know, type in a few things of your perspective um, into your chat box so that I could see. So just have a look at, have a, look at the second question. What is the assistance you would require from uh, CSL? So it looks like that most of you prefer to have, excuse me. Yeah, most of you prefer to have uh, more uh, guidelines and toolkits and training, yes. I would also feel, given that these two standardized ISQM one and two are very conceptual, uh, you know, put that in, put these concepts into practice. I think we need uh, help in terms of understanding this better through training. Uh, but to, you know, it's not only training, uh, guidelines and toolkits. If it comes out from the institute, I'm sure you can always tell any regulator or any, any authority, okay, this is what we are, how, this is how we are complying with this. Uh, so, so that's important, right? So thank you for your uh, feedback. Uh, this way you can close the call now. Yeah. All right. So this is the end of uh, the presentation. Uh, maybe uh, we could now move into the panel discussion. Over to you, Ishri.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your contribution towards the wonderful presentation. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your contribution towards the wonderful presentation. And now according to the plan, we are moving to the panel discussion. Uh, for the panel, uh, we have our presenter today, Mr. Sanat Fernando, partner Ernst and Young Sri Lanka, the alternate chairman of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of Sri Lanka, the auditing standard uh committee. Uh, and as the moderator, we have Mr. Suren Rajakariya, head of audit K B N G, chairman of the Sri Lanka Auditing Standards Committee. Uh, and also we have all the other panel members, starting off with Mr. Sanjay Bandara, the president of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of Sri Lanka. We also have Mr. Manil Jay Singh, her managing partner, Ernst and Young Sri Lanka. And we have Mr. Miss Nishani Perera, partner, who are I R, director, who are consulting private limited uh to join the panel now. So I request all the panel members to start off on their videos and uh join the session. Uh, I will now hand over the session to Mr. Suren Rajakariya to take over the session as the moderator. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks, Ishpi. Uh, thank you, Sanat. That was a very comprehensive presentation uh covering all the aspects, not only covering all the aspects, but also simplifying uh the processes required to comply with this, this significant eight quality objective criteria as set out in IS Q M one. Um, also, um, what shall I say, under, giving the underlying reasons as to how uh risks were a big part in uh setting up processes within the firm. So I think we have, it's it's a valid point you raise that we are now moving from uh audit based monitoring or deep base control to a firm based basis of looking at controls, risks and stuff like that. Um, and putting more responsibility on the management of firms or leadership as you call it and also governance. So that's the reason for our panel as well. Uh, we've got Sanjay who's gonna cover most of the uh regulatory aspects or a high level impact of, uh, you know, the standard with the institute uh regulate and regulator and, you know, the council and stuff like that. Uh, we've got Manil who's gonna cover the managing firms aspects of it because up to now we were talking of head of audits and audit partners who are responsible for the quality now. Uh, like you've highlighted from rising from ISQM, the uh managing partner or the leadership has to take accountability in a significant way. And um thanks, Nishani, as well joining us in terms of uh giving a better understanding for firms which are of a um smaller size. So not necessarily called small, medium or whatever, but as a smaller size. So um, thank you all for joining the discussion. Let me start off with Sanjay, our president of the institute, on the uh impact of of this whole standard or the the whole suite of three um standards, uh, which Sanat talked about, um, the impact on the profession. Uh, because institute's role is going to be to ensure or enable consistent audit quality across the country or across the firms in Sri Lanka. Um, and also there is an expectations from uh more small and medium practitioners to give significant assistance to them to to comply with uh these standards because this is um nothing like the standards which have been issued previously or quality control aspects or more. This is not restrictive in scope, but this is more wider in scope. So what would be the role of um the institute and the council and your leadership, Sanjay, to ensure consistent application through ISQM one?
Uh, yes, Suren, uh, so we, uh, the institute, we are going to implement or adapt this particular standard, two standards, you know, from uh this year December as required by I W S P. So that we are taking the decisions, we will adopt this standard from December twenty twenty two. But in consultation with the auditing standards committee. So we are in the process of finalizing two important arrangements relating to implementation of this standard, right? Uh, the first one is, so we are considering to postpone the effective date of the standard, so by two years. I, so even though we are going to adapt this standard, you know, from December twenty twenty two, so we are going to ensure that or we are, we are basically considering to extend the effective date by two years, meaning the standard will be effective from, you know, uh, twenty twenty four December. Meaning, you know, our practicing members will have two years and six months. So we are in June twenty twenty two, June to December, six months. And then, you know, December twenty two to uh December twenty twenty four, two and a half years for them to improve their systems and processes, right? So that it also they can, uh, you know, adapt the standard, you know, so when it is basically effective from twenty twenty four December. During this two and a half years, meaning, you know, basically almost uh twenty thirty months, during this thirty months period, the institute will continue to organize seminars or the workshops or a training sessions of this particular nature and help our practicing members to increase awareness the about this standard. Because as Sanat highlighted, you know, this is a, today what we had was very high level kind of a discussion, but again we like to go into little more details and will organize several sessions and the workshops, you know, uh, to increase awareness about these standards among practicing members, right? And you know, uh, so that, you know, as I earlier said, so they have sufficient time for them to improve their systems and processes, right? And then adapt this standard when it is effective, so that they can improve the audit quality of the, you know, audit and various other, the engagements they are basically uh undertaking. The second one, Suren, you know, is, so we are also considering, you know, to follow kind of a three tier approach in implementing this standard. The intention is to, you know, group, you know, auditors or I mean practicing firms into three categories. First one is, you know, the the auditors of listed entities. Second one, auditors of S Bs and third one, you know, auditor, I mean, other practicing firms. Where, when the standard is effective, so we want, you know, the auditors of all, you know, listed companies to fully comply with the requirements of the standard, hundred percent, you know, so from twenty twenty four December, for example, if auditing standards committee and the council finalize, you know, this uh effective date as twenty four, sorry, uh twenty four uh December, you know, from twenty twenty four December, the practicing firms, you know, conducting audit of listed companies like a fully comply with the requirement of the standard. Whereas uh some flexibility will be given for the auditors of S Bs and other other practicing firms basically. Right, where that they will be given an opportunity for them to comply with the full requirement. Maybe over a period of three years, starting from twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four, they will have to comply with some of the essential requirement, but they are asked over a period of three years, likely to be basically born, you know, so them to comply with the full requirement of the standard. Therefore, the institute perspective, for whatever the support required by the practicing firms, right? So by way of for training or, you know, the workshops or introducing toolkit, right? Or a checklist, you know, so that will be provided during this particular period, you know, for capacity building of the practicing firm, because we want, you know, so they basically, we want to support, you know, each and every practitioner or the practicing firm. So develop their, you know, uh, the capacity and, you know, increase their awareness, you know, uh about the requirement of this particular standard, so that they can, you know, improve system processes and they can comply with the requirement. And, you know, include the audit quality of uh the, or I mean the quality of whatever the services the, so they have been providing, sorry, so that is basically our plans.
Okay, I I think, yeah, that's, that sounds a bit easier in terms of uh timing because I think uh twenty twenty two December would be very, very uh difficult for some of the smaller firms to comply, but I'll come back to you after Manil's um question. Uh, basically, Manil, what I was thinking when Sanat was doing his presentation is now governance and leadership aspect is going to play a big part. So managing partners of firms as opposed to, you know, earlier head of audit or audit partner per se was taking a significant amount of responsibility or accountability in terms of quality. How do you think this standard will change the management aspects of yourself in ensuring appropriate governance and leadership processes are in place to fully address the quality risks aspects of an audit?
Thank you, Suren. I think Sanat covered this aspect quite a bit. One of the things I believe is going to happen is a lot of behavioral change that has to take place in this whole equation. Uh, I S Q C one anyway dealt with many of these aspects anyway. Uh, only thing is now this standard has taken it into the higher level, it has gone into the oversight uh role, so that's why it's quality management. Uh, so the question would be in uh designing a firm's strategy, let's say. Uh, quality would have to get embedded into that strategy. Uh, whereas in the past, I'm not necessarily sure whether quality played a big role in the the strategy per se. But going forward, it will, then if you look at the, the the compensation paid to partners. Now this will also get intertwined into, uh, obviously because it is now coming in as a, as a strategic objective. Uh, it will get in intertwined into the compensation uh patterns. Uh, then uh any uh remedial measures that are be taken, so that kind of thing is going to happen. Uh, plus the 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 top management will have to take responsibility to ensure. I think one of the things that the standard talks about is continuous, it's a continuous process, so it's continuously, you'll have to have uh uh say reviews, assessments that take place. And like an internal audit, now in an audit committee, you have quarterly, the internal audit coming and telling them whether the systems are in place, uh, whether there are any deviations and things like that. Uh, well, our firms also will have to start having that kind of uh communication coming through. Uh, because this, this, now the standard talks of three layers, it talks of the execution layer, which is in ISA uh two twenty, it then talks of the the supervision layer, which is uh which is, which is earlier what we had probably close to ISQC one, and now it is talking of the governance layer. So that is because it's quality management, it is a governance layer now, so the governance layer has to ensure that the system of quality control is in place and it is in its functioning to its satisfaction. That that's going to be a huge, I think, uh, how should I say, cultural shift? Uh, because uh I think as you mentioned, uh, we have probably done this through line responsibility. So we will talk about head of assurance and taking responsibility head of tax, but now it's the whole firm. Uh, so one or two things that are likely to come is, uh, I think I was discussing earlier with the president also is that say, for example, a firm has a few audits, but largely a tax practice. Now, because that firm is providing assurance services and related services, that whole firm is now under, under this standard. So even for the the tax work or the consulting work they do or any other work, ISQ Q M one uh becomes applicable. Uh, this is partly, I think, because of the fact that this whole equation about, uh, I don't know, internationally, this whole pressure of audit only firms, uh, whereas you're sharing profits of uh other service lines and independence and this, all this is intertwined, I think. So so therefore, uh, they are saying, you know, practitioner, if they are delivering any services, uh, I I think they need to come under some form of a uh quality control and then if you come under quality control, then it must be managed. So the 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 whole, I think the trust is about managing of the quality of the firm as opposed to quality control, which is really the checks and balances that you put in place. I I hope I understood.
No, so uh it it is definitely going to be a big challenge and like you said, behavioral change, cultural change and all that. And do you think taking, I mean, in in your Sri Lankan experience, you know, accountability and taking responsibility for audit quality of audits done by audit partners by the senior partner, how is it gonna change or how is it gonna be challenging is my question?
Yeah, so that is what I mentioned, that that the senior partner will have to put the checks and balances which ensures, so for example, still the audit quality is the responsibility of the partner, engagement partner. Then now we will have the other layer which goes and checks and says, okay, this has happened or hasn't happened uh in accordance with the firm's uh practices and policies and whatever it is. Then the next question will be, what do you do about it?
Yeah.
Now that what you do about it is not quite there. So now you'll have to demonstrate to say, okay, it's like, it's in in an organization, if you have not complied with internal controls, what do you do? Of course, in our, in our scenario in Sri Lanka, of course, they will say, I'll get it sorted out. I don't think, I don't think that's gonna work here. I think to the regulators and outside world, you have to demonstrate how serious you are about quality. And if there are quality occurrences, which which are not in compliance with the firm's uh requirements, uh, then there has to be the, I I think the characteristic approach will come in.
Yeah. I I, so that's where the consequences of, you know, these failures need to be probably documented and pushed down to uh audit partners, which means the other partners will um have have a different view, so that managing aspect is going to be really challenging, isn't it? That's what I was trying to get, like your example with the larger practices consisting of tax and then a smaller portion is consisting of audit, the cost of maintaining that quality management aspect will have to be shared by the rest of the people as well, so.
Yes.
That's where the problem, yeah.
In Sri Lanka, there's going to be another issue because I I'm not too sure internationally how it operates, but here what happens is under our act. If we do any of these services, we are providing professional services, that is tax, financial management, uh, consulting and auditing is part of it, so auditing is not the only thing that comes under practicing, unfortunately, it is in Sri Lanka.
So that brings, that's, that's a good leeway into Sanjay back again to you. Now, uh, should the institute, if that is the scenario, should the institute going forward require the managing partners to confirm compliance with ISQM when they are renewing the practicing license would be my challenge to you, San.
Yeah.
Suren, just one, 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 one issue there is, I think, it is going to have a bit of an issue. Because we don't issue practicing certificates or licenses to firms. Unfortunately, we give it by partner.
Partner wise, okay. That's, that's why I, my question was framed that the managing partner should be confirmed compliant in order to get the practicing license was the question.
Yeah, if he doesn't, he might not get his license, but the others will. So that, that is going to be the challenge. So I think if you had a system where the firm, firms like, you say, if the firm, say now, like, I think please, you have to have the partner license and you have to have the firm of the license.
Okay, so, so.
Maldives is like, so here it's not like that.
That's a good, uh, I mean, connection to Sanjay again. What would be, would, would something like that be required if that is the case? Because one is the managing partner getting the license and the other one like Manil raises, the firm practicing license, would, would that be something to think about?
Yeah, at the moment, yeah, the firm registration is not required, you know, uh, as such, Suren, they ask for institute that. But you know, this, uh, the what Manuel suggested, so we, I, we will actually consider when this uh standard is implemented, right? Whether kind of an assurance or a confirmation of uh senior partners will require, you know, uh, uh, you know, as the detailing, uh, so whether they are in compliance with the ISQM standards, right? Will be considered, that can be, uh, basically, that can be form part and parcel of, you know, uh, practice certificate, ready well of uh the particular partner, so we will consider that one going forward.
Okay, another point which came up, I think I, if I can push it to Sanat. I think a lot of assistance was required in terms of toolkits and guidance and stuff like that. But monitoring uh at at C A S L level, uh, would that be a requirement, Sanat, to ensure that, you know, um, the profession is compliant in terms of ISQM one or would that be a um not so important aspect?
Uh, yeah, so so, yeah, so so as the kind of standard bearer, um, you know, when you also um have a system where the firm still that we have a quality management system, uh, you as the standard bearer, prior to granting uh the license, uh, the standard bearer also uh should have a process of checking. So in other words, um, you know, if, 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 I I should say, if it's not there, then you would not be able to figure out whether this license can be granted or not. Uh, so you might uh expect the public in that entire value chain at firm level, at part. At firm level, at part, at individual levels, at firm level. At the institute level being the the standard bearer, the the public expectation could be that, how do you? Take the decision to allow to re- renew the license is something which should come through a process. So so I would expect. It's not covered in the the standard, I mean, this quality management, but I would expect that to be. An outcome of this.
An additional process to think about maybe when we do the deliberations on the management standard, okay. Fair enough. The Nishani, coming back to our on all the small and medium, you know, operators and smaller. What do you see as significant challenges for a sole proprietor or a partnership? With about three, four partners. If they have a client to who who is an S B E, we'll say. Not a not a listed company, but S B E will be monitored by the Sri Lanka Accounting and Audit Standard Monitoring Board. What what do you think would be the pitfalls or significant challenges initially, based on your understanding, Nishani?
Right, I think firstly, the challenge would be the first time application. Firstly, according to the ISQM one, they need to have kind of a system, system of quality management in place. Before going for the monitoring, at that point, I guess the firms will face whether they have adequate resources. As well as the support, because the standards are a little bit inherently complex. As well as for them to understand, as well as for us, for them to have kind of a system of quality monitoring in place. At the very beginning, it will be a little bit challenging. Due to various reasons, maybe the the resources adequacy. And sometimes they may have to put their resources to developing those, designing those systems at that time, they have to think about the cost. Of that, all those things, I think at the very beginning, it will be challenging. And at the same time, when they are continuing with that. Standard, the continuous monitoring processes should be there, the internal quality control review should be there for all those things sometimes. If it's maybe two or three partner firms, they may find difficulty in finding people to perform that. Internal quality review process also, because if they use one partner as the engagement partner and the other partner as the engagement quality review. If it's too firm, if it's a two partner partnership, they will face the challenges. By at the time of monitoring as well.
Yeah, so that's, okay, then you are, I think, identified the most important aspect. We will come back to the resources with other panelists also. But my view was, you know, in a smaller firms, governance and leadership aspects should be slightly easier. Because, you know, you are constantly in communication with, you know, the. Smaller number of three, four, five or ten people. You may have processes in an in an informal manner, but you know, you can document that aspect. Would 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 that assumption be right in in terms of, you know, understanding governance and leadership aspects?
I think yes, because the system within a smaller firm, the communication, those are simplified. Because we can access the leadership so frequently, the people can access very easily. The communication process is easy and the governance, I think there should be a shift from the culture. At the moment that we are in to in compliance with ISQM one, because. It's often this month, basically from the leadership and the governance perspective. There should be a small shift, but when it comes to the communication and the information flow, I think it's a little bit simpler than a big firm.
Yes, only issue in terms of why to say this culture is probably the focus on quality and. Client acceptance processes may have to be strengthened because. The 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 issues identified in the standard or the risk-based aspects may not be that more. That much robust in a smaller firm. Do you think like that or? Would you agree to some?
Yeah, agree to some extent, yes. I think this ISQM one, since this is risk-based also. Identification of the risk as from the scalability. Standard itself, it allows the firms to have the scalability also. In that perspective, yes, I guess risk approach will give that kind of a flavor to the firm to change the culture as well.
Okay, so the most important, I think, at this point in time is there like you, like Sanat highlighted, there is resources. We talk about H R or staff, then we talk about technology and we talk about intellectuals. So there those are the three types of resources. But I think like Nishani highlighted, I'm going to come back to Sanjay first. We probably have a big issue in terms of human resources. Quality of the human resources, the number, volume of human resources, et cetera. So if I can have, you know, comments from Sanjay first and Manil followed up by that. How how do we think we can address this? Issue in in which has, you know, become very, very serious in the last few months or a year. Sanjay, any any plans and then Manil as well. Manil also former president, so he had a lot of plans, we can hear from him as well.
Yeah, actually, Surin, during the last two years, we have seen a kind of a drop in. Kind of student registration, right? And in addition to that, you know, most of these universities were closed, right? Therefore, university students, anyway, substantial number of, you know, university students at the management faculties are students of ours. They were undergoing trainings, they were part and parcel of, you know, you know. Basically, the student base or a trainees. So therefore, so due to the factors of this particular nature, so most of the firm found it difficult to attract, you know. Some of the students, because you know, mostly the university students, they were, see the universities are closed, they were, they were there at their homes, they were not in Kalambu. And the cost of living, you know, in Kalambu, you know, was substantial. Therefore, due to the reasons of that particular nature, the the students, you know, so were there. And we, that they are, you know, basically hometowns, we could not attract, you know, basically the 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 staff. But we believe that now, you know, so when the university, actually, we also need a kind of, you know, research into this particular area, yeah. That was a kind of a common complaint, you know, I mean, every firm, you know, they usually, it's very difficult to. Attract the students, students are not there, or I mean, the staff is not there, et cetera. So therefore, with these universities reopening and we have seen that, you know, even the institute side. The the student registration has started increasing, right? Compared to last two years now this year. I've seen that, you know, there is a kind of a noticeable increase in the student registration. I've seen that, you know, some of the universities have already, you know, indicated that they're going to start, you know. Physical lectures for the student with that, you know, so we believe that to some extent, you know. To acceptable extent, you know, this could be resource, right? So therefore, we also, in addition to that, from our end, you know, so we have been increasing awareness, you know, about starting training early. You know, impulse of starting training early, you know, among university students and, you know, the the. The other students and et cetera to ensure that, you know, they start their training early and, you know. Practicing firms can attract good resources as well. Therefore, we are also monitoring this, we are also taking, you know. Actions, you know, as much as possible to ensure that, you know, adequate, you know, human resources are available for practicing firms. So we will continue to monitor, we will continue to support in this endeavor as well.
Manil, in terms of human members as well, if you can address.
Yeah, just before I address that, one thing, what Nishani is, I mean. The smaller firms, where they are going to struggle a lot, Surin is, yes, a lot of these things is not as complex to them as a big firm. But documenting this is going to be the biggest issue. So, you know, if I want to hire someone, I might go and talk to the H R partner and it will get hired. I mean, that's how, I think, not smaller firms, you own firms like ours, that's what's happening. Now, the question is, in ISQM one, that then that decision has to get documented. Where whereas in Sri Lanka, I think in the documentation process, we are hard week, you know, we we talk, we do a lot. Actually, we do a lot of these things in in practice. But unfortunately, if someone were to come independently, come and ask, what did you do, we will come proving of this stuff. I don't think any firm, the largest of firm might have fifteen, twenty partners, but. In the greater scheme, these are not big firms, right? Not like you have two hundred partners or something like that. So so most firms are relatively, I would say, small, in the large scheme. And we do have systems where many, many, all firms have some some form of system. It's just that it is not documented historically, we have got it or, you know, whatever it is. So the biggest challenge, I think, in Sri Lanka is going to be documenting some of these things. Because what the what the standard says is even even what you do, you are supposed to just document to make sure that everyone knows. This is what you need to do. So that's going to be one of the biggest challenges in my view. So now comes to your human resource. Yes, I think this is a big challenge in the moment, because one is, as I think the president said. Profession is also getting less attractive. So in order to, one needs to attract, attract to do accountancy, next one is. From that accountant, see to do assurance services. And then with all these burden, I feel that it will become less and less attractive going forward and that's going to be a huge, huge issue. For the the practitioners to attract and retain people is going to be one of the biggest issues. In the light of that and in the light of what's happening today, this ISQM one is going to be, I think, a relatively. Challenging task, because even the people we have now are trying to apply for. Jobs overseas or, you know, the country situation is also not helping, COVID didn't help. So that that's, so so these are the challenges I think we are going to have. But once again, this is where I believe. We need to see how how the institute also can come into play, president also, right? Because we might be able to consolidate some of this stuff. To to relatively, how should I say, streamline centralized processes. And then, you know, if if the general templates are done, I'm sure the firms can take it and modify it and take and then and use it. Plus, the firms also needs to, I think, think outside the box. Now, this is something that I have been telling you on ISQC one, like, say, for example. Quality control, now, internal reviews, now, if you are two-part firm, you can't sit and do internal reviews, like, you don't have the resources to do that. Then maybe they need to come come to an agreement with another firm or another couple of firms or. Maybe you can have a pool of reviewers where they can come and do that review and give give a report back to the managing partner. So so we had to think outside the box, like, I think, we did think outside the box during the plantations. When this plantation audits came about, when two, three firms got together and, you know, did did these audits and things like that. So like that, I think we need to do something. I think president had a a thought where. We need to probably at the institute level also have a task force or committee or I don't know whatever you want to call it. To to make sure that this whole process works and moves forward. Because because a lot of challenges I think we are going to face is in the documentation side. So it's not, I don't think it's. Not what we are not doing, I think we do quite a bit of stuff. It's it's about documenting and ensuring that we can prove to someone that these are being done. And we are addressing to some degree the quality aspects or the quality management part. But say, if, say, for example, if you were the, if you were the head of the organization and if you wanted to. See a report to see whether all your partners are complying in the department, you might probably not have that. But but individually, we probably know in the big audience what is happening, I'm I'm reasonably sure the managing partner or the senior partner. Probably gets involved in some of those audits also, maybe at the client level, I don't know, whatever, right? So so it's it's that, I I feel it's the documentation process that's lacking in a big way. And also, I I don't know whether this is a Sri Lankan problem, most of us, we we don't like to be handcuffed, right? We we are a race, we don't like to have too much procedures, we like think outside the box and move. Whereas the Western guys, they, you you, they, some person told me long years ago. If you talk, talk to an American, he will give you a manual as to how to walk from point A to B. In our case, we will, we will definitely, yeah, point B, go to point. T, you figure out how to get there. So I I know, so the the human resource is a is a challenge, no doubt. The the type you will be attracting to the profession, whether we can retain some of these people to the in the profession. And in that environment, can we deliver the level of quality that is required? These are all, I think, challenges.
No, yeah, that's 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 exactly why I I think raised the issue, because in terms of resourcing. I think getting people would be the number one, even to document, you need people, so that's that's got to be our biggest issue. Because my personal experience is we found it easy, because like you said, Manil, we have a lot of these procedure. You need to find someone to write it down, like a control. And I mean, all of us auditors, no, no, when the, when you go for audit and when the management and this has not documented the control. You don't take it, take their word, right? We put it in the management letter saying you haven't done it, so. So reasonably enough. Uh, so globally also, if it's not documented, it's not done, which is the unfortunate state. In in that light, Sanat, now, resourcing is a big issue, so. If we have to design incentives to 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 focus people's priorities or their behaviors. Against, I say, let's let's put it in a positive sense. If we have to design incentives of. Focus priorities of our people on financial and operational aspects. To for their commitment to quality, how how is there, is there any, you know, advice you can give? How to focus their commitment to quality in terms of incentives?
Yeah, so so so, a- a- any profession, you know, if your ultimate outcome is a professional service now. In our case, it's the audit opinion. So now the audit opinion has to have a level of quality. And there is a team that is manufacturing that, if I use that word. So now, for, it's true that there is a kind of an audit fee being charged. But of course, if our focus is only to start and finish somehow or other, other. That is not what is intended in the current context. In the current context, what's demanded is the quality objective needs to be met and that's only when you say that. That's the only situation where you can say it's completed. You can't just complete the work, but you have to achieve the quality objective and complete the work. So now, we need to find a mechanism to bring this quality aspect as the driving factor. As opposed to the the physical work being completed as we do, you know, literally. So so in that, I would think, you know, a transparent method of. You know, communicating, okay, here are the quality goals that you should have as a team, as a firm. And and this is how you should be monitored on achieving these quality goals. It's not about, I would think, the fee increments that you might have got from a client. It's not about, you know, how fast did you do, complete the audit. Now it's about how how far did you meet the quality objectives? So so we might have to design a different K P I system, I'm sure the firms already have it, this type of thing. And then, you know, bring the team's attention to that. And and incentivize them in achieving those new quality K P I's. As opposed to the the theoretical, I mean, I mean, the traditional ones of doing the audit faster and doing. You know, completing the audit. Now it's achieving the quality objective and there has to be some method of incentive. Which is not necessarily driven by, you know, the fee increments. Or the, you know, the margin that you make on and on it, that that's what I feel.
Okay, so that's fair enough. So that's where I think even ISQM links back into the H R processes of. Firms as well, how very well structured it is and how, you know, quality goals are ingrained into. Each individual's performance appraisal, I suppose. That's that's one thing I wanted you to highlight, that's a good point. And then, when you don't do it, the consequences aspects is what I think Manil covered towards the beginning of the presentation. One question, there is a, when a, maybe I can address it to Nishani. What are the suggestions for smaller firms to stay in the audit sector? It's not arising from ISQM one, I think it's a more macro level question. It's not arising from ISQM one, I think it's a more macro level question. What are the suggestions for smaller firms to stay in the audit practice? Maybe that's the question. Maybe Sanjay, president also can chip in a few answers. Yeah. Nishani, yeah.
But, can I answer that? So, so it's like this, it's, okay, this is assurance based and related service based, no doubt, but. But it doesn't, uh, really change the objective in a sense, as a professional or a practitioner. Whatever service you give. Uh, I think there is an expectation that that service meets a certain standard. Quality standard, some standard, it, it, there is an expectation. So, so, uh, in broadly thinking, I don't think there is difference. Of course, the bar for audit might be slightly higher than, uh. Say maybe bar for doing consulting, time or something, but, uh, but nevertheless. The, the market out there relies on that in doc, uh, all that work, right? Whether it's a tax computation, whether it's a, it's a feasibility study or whatever it is. Uh, the market out there relies on that, so they are expecting a certain level of.
That's right. Uh. The pressures might, pressures might be more on the regulatory aspect, right?
For the audit, yes.
Audit, yeah.
But increasingly, that is happening in the tax side also.
Oh, okay, with the.
Coming in the, yeah, because now they have put these registered accounts and now whatever, whatever the terminology and. Increasingly, that will come, you know, last time, I think president knows, we had a tough fight trying to get something out of the Internet Revenue Act. Uh, because they basically wanted to hold, uh, the, 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 what you call, you put, founder responsible for fraud and error. And I don't know, whatever, other things also. So, so, so I think, the writing is on the wall, this is going to come. Right? Uh, maybe we have postponed it, pushed it back a little bit of activities for the other services, but. I don't know, as a practitioner, whether you can. Get away by doing work. Uh, not meeting a certain, uh, standard, I'm not too sure, that's a good thing, from, from professional point of view also. I know the, the focus is on audit and assurance services, no doubt about that. But whatever services that a professional accountant does, see, you see, today we are having a lot of, uh. Uh, thing about some of our members in government doing various things and, you know, their responsibility and why. It's the same thing. So even if you are an accountant somewhere, I think the work that you do. As a finance manager, financial controller, I think as a professional, there is a certain standard that you need to achieve. And then that has to get embedded into each one of us, whether we like it or not, it is there. Uh, so I, I don't know.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, so then, in addition to that, the smaller firms can consider consolidation, you know, one, you know. Maybe, uh, three to four firms, you know, for the purpose of, you know, complying with the requirement of ISQ.
Yeah.
Right? So when, as an example, you know, maybe two partner, uh, four firms, you know. Consolidate, you know, for the purpose of complying with this requirement, so they eat partners, right? So they can have a kind of, you know, you know, a dialogue or a discussion and then, you know, can ensure that, you know. So they, I think, when they work together, they would be in a better position to come up with the, you know, better systems and processes to comply with the requirement. You know, only for this particular purpose or otherwise, you know, consolidation, I think will help them, you know. Uh, the, to comply with this one, then there will be operating, uh, alone, uh, standalone entities.
May, yeah, maybe even a virtual kind of a cluster where one firm looks after quality, another firm looks after another process. And other firms after another process, yeah. Well, I, I, I think, I mean, that's probably what Manil has alluded to at the beginning, but I guess it, there has to be more trust. Develop between those, uh, ten or whatever number of people to get together and.
And if necessary, institute can facilitate.
Yeah, unless, yeah.
You know, institute can, you know, kind of a draft, kind of an agreement, you know, uh, kind of, you know, common agreement, you know, where, you know. Say for example, four firms, partners or four, four, four firms can get into the particular agreement given by the institute. And they can work within a certain framework given by the institute, you know, basically for the benefit of, uh, everyone, right?
So for that to work, which is a good idea, the, the, the licensing also has to be performed. Then you can link the two together and make it work, uh, that.
Yeah.
You know, because of this virtual arrangement, only you're issuing the license to practice, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, I, I think we are, uh, yeah, eleven, eleven five, so, um. I think we covered a significant amount of practical issues which may arise out of this. And also gave some, um, ideas as to how to probably overcome some of them. And also looked at, um, the, how the institute may be able to assist and also. I look at scaling the approach, scalability of this approach over a period of two years. Which all can be sort of, um, taken forward in the next, uh, few months. So thank you very much, thank you all the panelists for your valuable comments and insights. Thanks, Anat, for that excellent presentation, um, and covering all the aspects in a comprehensive manner. And, uh, let me hand it back to Ishwih at the institute.
And sorry, Surin, one more comment, you know, recorded version of this, uh, session. Recorded version of this session, you know, will be made available in our website, so that you know, uh. The participants, you know, if they, you want to listen to the presentation again, if they want their own, you know, uh. Other partners or the colleagues in their firms or the managers who want to listen to the firms, you know, uh, that can be done, you know, so this will be.
That's a good idea. I think I, uh, probably advise those single, uh, participants to sort of pay out the presentation. And the firm level and, um, at least improve their understanding so that. Because like we all discussed, this is that firm level and not that individual audit level. So everybody in the firm have to pull through together. Thank you for that comment as well, Sanjay. Um, Ishwih, can we hand it back to the institute for closure or?
Yes, sir, thank you, uh, thank you. I personally thank all the presenter, Mr. Anant Fernando. And I thank, uh, thank, uh, all the panel members who contributed tremendously. Towards this, um, panel discussion, uh, to have a fruitful, uh, discussion. And, uh, with that, we will wind up the session and, uh, hope to see you all, uh, in a similar session in future. Thank you.
Thank you.